Morning everyone, welcome to Hardin County Commissioners Court. Today is Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, it's ten a.m. and time to get started. All members of the court here in this meeting is called to order. Everyone will please rise to the invitation, that'll be delivered by Commissioner Young followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Lord, I want to thank you for today and all of your many blessings. Give us the strength and courage to make the right decisions for our citizens and be with us as we conduct the business of the county. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is to consider and possibly approve the June eleventh, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting minutes presented by the county treasurer. Second, that motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, consider approval of request to cancel law register claims from June eleventh and approval of today's cash statement presented by the county treasurer. Good morning, Mrs. McWilliams.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of one million, four hundred, four thousand, five hundred, nineteen dollars and forty cents. On the cash summary report, in general checking account, we have nine hundred, ninety-two thousand, nine hundred, forty-six dollars and thirty-three cents. In First Financial Bank, general checking, special money market, twenty-five million, one hundred, ninety-two thousand, eight hundred, sixty-five dollars and twenty-six cents. In Tech School General, three hundred, forty-four thousand, three hundred, seventy-one dollars and ninety-two cents. For totaling cash funds of twenty-six million, five hundred, thirty thousand, one hundred, eighty-three dollars and fifty-one cents.
Judge Purvis presents.
Second, that motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you ma'am. Item number five, authorization to pay county bills as presented by the county auditor. Good morning, Mrs. Gore.
Good morning. The period period expenditures for June the twelfth through the fourteenth are six hundred, seventy-nine thousand, two hundred, twenty-four dollars and eighty-one cents. Period period expenditures for June twentieth is thirty-four thousand, two hundred, seventy-five dollars and ninety-three cents. Expenditures for Commissioners Court today are four hundred, sixty-one thousand, three hundred, sixty-six dollars and sixty-four cents. A list of additional bills to be approved is our help dental life for three hundred, sixty-one thousand, six hundred, fifty-eight dollars and one cent. The total expenditures and transfers is one million, five hundred, thirty-six thousand, five hundred, twenty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents. Gross payroll of June the fourteenth was six hundred, eighteen thousand, eight hundred, fifty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents for a total transfer for that payroll of seven hundred, sixty-one thousand, four hundred, thirty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents.
Motion paid attention. Second, that motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. If we could take a pause for just one moment, I'd like to invite Mr. John Landis up. He's the president of the board for the Hardin County Appraisal District and he reached out to me yesterday afternoon and said he would love to introduce the new chief appraiser. So if that's okay with the members of the court, I'd like to invite you to come on up and bring your new guy and let's hear about him. Good morning, Deion.
Good morning. We appreciate the time to get to come up and introduce our new chief appraiser, Carl Keller. I found out during this process, during the interview process, that there's a lot of training that goes in to getting to be a chief appraiser. And Chris's personality, I think, is one of the main attributes. So Carl spent time, nineteen years total, in Liberty and also in San Jacinto County as the assistant chief over there. After being on the school board for eleven years, one thing that's very important to me is education. He's got a business degree from Sam Houston and so I look forward to how we're doing right now. Last year, we had five thousand protests that went in front of ARB board and this year I just asked Carl and we're down to thirty-two hundred now. So what we're attempting to do is have informal protests with the appraiser to handle most of them or as many as we can as low in the process as we possibly can to make it more streamlined and not have to go to the ARB board. So and that also helps with the personality with the taxpayers to get the dough of the person that's actually appraising their property. But Mr. Carl Keller.
Welcome to Hardin County.
Thank you.
And Ms. Landis, thank you for bringing him up, also members of the court and the public. Mr. Landis has been staying in contact with me as y'all going through the process, I think y'all started back in March. You were trying to find a new chief appraiser and went through a process and kind of had a firm come in and help y'all with the process. And so welcome to Hardin County. We look forward to working with you and anything we can do to help you in any way, we're here to help and work together.
All right, appreciate it.
And any feedback from the taxpayers, positive or negative, we'd like to have some positive. But taxation is a very sensitive issue. No one likes it, but.
Including me.
Yeah, me too. So thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Keller, if I could ask you just a quick question.
Sure.
July twenty-fifth is the deadline to file the certified values with us. Are we looking to get them any sooner or is it going to be closer to the twenty-fifth?
It'll be closer to twenty-fifth.
I've kind of thought that might be your answer, but I wanted to go ahead and get it from you now.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Item number six is to consider and possibly approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget amendments as presented by the county auditor, Mrs. Gore. And this has to do with the audit, ongoing audit that's going on and that's why these amendments are coming forward, correct?
That is correct. These are just some last minute goodkeeping interests that need to be done for our closeout of our fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. We're creating some new line items. The first set of line items to be created is due to the financing of the emergency management trucks and the road and bridge trucks. It's just recording the financial agreement that was entered into at the beginning of fiscal year twenty-three. We traded the trucks off so the agreement stopped before the fiscal year ended, but we still had to book it. So we have to create a revenue line item, capital lease proceeds for forty-five thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. And the offset is an expense line item for capital outlay from the lease, forty-five thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. We increased or created a revenue account in our road and bridge fund for capital lease proceeds of the amount of one hundred, nine, two thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars. The offset was expenses to road and bridge one, capital outlay for lease is forty-seven, eight ninety-seven. Road and bridge two, capital outlay from the lease is forty-eight thousand, six oh eight. Road and bridge three is forty-eight thousand, six oh eight and road and bridge four is forty-seven thousand, five ninety-eight. The next set of budget amendments has to do with the new gas fee requirement, it's gas fee ninety-six. We have to record some subscriptions, which is software agreements that we enter into. And so we need to create a revenue line item in road and bridge for the lease proceeds subscription and one hundred, eighteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars. We're increasing the capital outlay subscription line item on the expense side for one hundred, eighteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars. We're increasing the revenue or creating a revenue account for the general fund, lease proceeds subscription is fifty-six thousand, eight fifty-nine. We offset an expense line item, capital outlay subscription, fifty-six thousand, eight fifty-nine. We're creating a revenue line item in our law library for lease proceeds subscriptions, twenty thousand, four sixty-seven. And we're creating a new expense to offset that for a capital outlay subscription and twenty thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Mrs. Gore, can we go back to the one that's one hundred, eighteen thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Can you tell me again, what exactly is that for?
I don't have it with me, but it's recording the gas fee requirements and it's usually like any kind of subscriptions that was entered into. So I don't have that information that actually details that out, but I can get it for y'all.
I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
No, no problem at all.
I just didn't, it's not software though, right?
Not, not in that case.
Okay.
But I will check.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion to accept that.
Certainly.
Second, motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Young, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Gore.
Yes, thank you.
Item seven, consider approval of request by the county treasurer, Mrs. McWilliams, to open a new non-interest bearing bank account titled Hardin County CDBG-dash mitigation-dash E five ninety-six at First Financial Bank. And this is for the project funds that will come in and be expended related to the CDBG mitigation projects.
Certainly.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item eight, consider adoption of resolution twenty dash twenty-four proclaiming June twenty twenty-four as men's health month and Tuesday, today, June twenty, I'm sorry, yeah, today, June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, as gift of life, men's health awareness day in Hardin County. And this is requested by Mrs. Norma Sampson, gift of life executive director. And we have the resolution in front of us and I think Ms. Sampson wants to make sure we know about the screenings that are coming up. Do you want to talk about it or do you want me to do it?
I'm happy to, or we can do it collectively.
Either way, come on up because we have one in Coontz. I want to make sure we tell everybody about that one, but tell us about all of them.
Thank you so much, Judge and Commissioners, for the opportunity to share our life-saving message with you and everyone in Hardin County. As you mentioned, this is, I think, the best for the last in terms of July that we'll be here in, at the Health Department and with the outstanding support of Sharon Whitley and their team. We are going to bring a robust sense of services that will be delivered to men and counts. And we encourage you and everyone to please ask them to register. Our slogan is be a man and get checked. And we've just had two successful screenings in Belmont and Port Arthur. We screened more than six hundred and fifty men. And as this brochure states or this little flyer, these are all the screenings, primary care, PSA. We also have for those that want HIV, blood pressure and pulse ox. It is a very extensive and comprehensive primary care offering at no charge. And the men are then, for those that get the screenings, they're navigated to onsite physicians who have an opportunity to go over the point of care results in addition to any other questions that they might have. So our directive is to try to lead the men that we love and that are in our lives to be good stewards of their health. And some are reluctant, so we need the women, excuse me, many times behind those individuals to encourage them to take advantage of the screenings. There's appointment times, we start at nine o'clock and we take walk-ins. So we really try to do our best to make sure you can seamlessly get in, get these screenings. And then you leave with a tee-shirt, a lunch from Jason's Deli and a twenty-five dollar gift certificate to go to Jason's Deli with a whole lot of love and support. So this is our initiative in the summertime to encourage young men to take care of themselves and take advantage of a nearly five hundred dollars worth of screenings at no cost. Our medical director, Dr. Lobley, is onsite. She will get all of the reports, contact the men following the screenings, go over that. And if they don't have a physician or they need care, we'll be navigating them to those individuals. For those who are made with the gift of life prostate program, our program pays for all of these services. In addition, we will then take those men who have abnormal PSAs, we'll refer them to local urologists and we'll continue to pay for their care, even to the point of cancer treatment if needed. So with your help, we ask for you to encourage men in Hardin County, register, take advantage of this opportunity and to really be good stewards again so they can live a long and healthy life. So I've included a couple of other brochures and I'll have some of these if you want to distribute later to anyone else. We also have a program called Active Living After Cancer for anyone who's been diagnosed with cancer and has kind of run the bell or finished their treatment. It's a free twelve-week class. It's evidence-based and it's Zoom, so you don't have to come in person. And it's a wonderful opportunity that it's been found to reduce the rate of risk of cancer repeating itself. And it's through an MD Anderson grant that we have. So it's available again to all of Hardin County residents. So thank you, Judge and Commissioners, for the opportunity to talk about our life-saving screenings and to join us in this collaborative initiative to save lives throughout southeast Texas.
Well, thank you from here in this to Hardin County. I think, was last year the first year that y'all offered?
It was, Judge. This is, it was so successful. As a matter of fact, we kind of went out of the, you know, we used every part of the Hardin County, the Health Department and had over sixty volunteers that were there, not to mention numerous physicians or the wing gate that came in as well and helped the men. Truly appreciate having an opportunity to have a one-on-one with physicians. And we find that people have questions outside of prostate, certainly with cancer, but other really, you know, chronic diseases that they're confronting. Just last week, we had to have an ambulance kind of pick up two men that had off-the-chart panel blood glucose and, you know, high blood pressure. So that's what we generally see is men with hypertension and unfortunately with diabetes. So this is an invaluable resource, pardon me, to our area. So thank you.
All those people with hypertension, they're probably elected officials or chief.
I think that might have something to do with it. We want to be there for you. So again, thank you for partnering with us in our services.
Thank you, Ms. Sampson. This is July the twenty-fifth at the end, right?
It's July twenty-seventh.
Seven, I'm sorry.
And I've got more of these and I'll leave them, you know, please.
If you want to leave them for sharing, we'll get them out to people.
Thank you very much. We'll do that.
And y'all are also going to be in Orange, July thirteenth, if somebody lives over that way and wants to go there.
And that's why we listed it, because we didn't want people, if you have a commitment already on that Saturday, to have four opportunities to take advantage of the screenings.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it. Thank you.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, adopted by resolution twenty dash twenty-four and the second by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And Ms. Sampson, they'll have that resolution for you in the back.
Could we take a quick photograph for social media to post?
Are you going to be here till the end or are you fixing to leave?
I can stay.
If you're going to stay, we'll take it right at the end. Is that okay with you?
Thank you very much.
All right, yes ma'am. Item nine is to consider and possibly approve the amendment to Hardin County Personnel Policy to include years of service policy as requested by Mrs. Harrington, the Director. And this was an item we tabled from the last meeting and you've got it ready and bringing it back up, right?
Yes, sir. I think it's good to go. I did send it out to everyone, well, the elected officials and department heads and all I received back was positive feedback. So does anybody have any questions?
Is there any elected official or department head here that wants to make a comment? Or do y'all have any concerns regarding the years of service policy as it's now written? That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Young, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. One thing I probably should have made sure of, when does this take effect? When is it supposed to take effect?
If everybody's in agreement, we have the whole personnel policy coming up that we'll do a workshop July the night. And maybe I think can we just include that with this?
If this is effective today, does this mean that there's, are there some people that are going to need to be paid differently starting today?
They would be.
So didn't we talk about making this effective October first?
I think so.
We just adopted it without putting it in effect.
So I'm in my motion to approve effective October first.
And you still saying that motion?
Yep.
All right, let's vote again. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, effective October first. All right. Does anybody have an issue with it starting October first? Good deal. Thank you very much. Item ten, consider approval of request by Mr. Alex Parker, floodplain administrator, to approve a replant of lots four into lots four A and four B, block eight of Pine Wood subdivision, section one, in the John Kim Bauer abstract number five ninety-five located in precinct for Mr. Young.
I believe they're just splitting a lot. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Move to approval.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item eleven, consider approval of request by Sheriff Davis to set the sheriffs and constables fees to become effective January first, twenty twenty-five. And I think, are we just renewing them as is?
That is correct. There's no changes.
Certainly.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, is that right?
Yes.
Seconded by Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twelve, consider approval of request by Sheriff Davis to amend the fiscal year twenty-four budget to assist in the purchase of equipment to be installed on a newly purchased van as follows. From zero one zero four one eight hundred contingency general in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars to zero one zero five seven zero five seventy, equipment, the same amount, and this will be to create a new line item. Sheriff?
We, we've purchased a vehicle and it's at the upfitter now with, ready to start some work on building out the inside of that. The funding source for this had planned to be and will be when we dispose of the mobile command center that's up for auction, up for bids right now. Our upfitter, unbelievably, is running ahead of schedule and so they sent everything to us for POs and authorization to get started. So we needed basically the opportunity to get to the money before we have the money, revenue coming in. And so we worked out an agreement with the judge and our proposal and our request. My request is that we pull that money in order to get that process started and have something to point that PO toward. And then we'll be able to work with the auditor of moving that money around once we, once we get some proceeds. And I feel positive that we've got some bidders that have already come in. Of course, there's still bid and the process is still ongoing. So I think the end of the week that cancels.
So will this be used for transportation?
Yes, this is, it's actually a multipurpose van. It's going to be used for several things. It's going to be used for some of the guys in SWAT. It's going to be used for a mobile crime scene to carry bodies to actual deputies. There's going to be a work area inside of there with two desks to be able to work from. So we're hoping to get a lot of different uses out of it. The proceeds from the sale of our command center here must go to a like project, meaning the funds can only be used for something that would replicate a mobile command center or the ability to go sit onsite and conduct operations. And so that's what that funding will go to.
Certainly.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion?
I do have one question. I know you didn't get any bids last time.
Correct. So we went out, we went out for bids again. Y'all approved us to go out for bids and I think we've had two so far. And I expected or heard there was going to be a third one yesterday or today. I haven't checked on it. So a lot more interest the second go around.
But they're sealed, so.
Yeah, yeah.
They're open privately, is that right? Okay. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Sheriff. Number thirteen, consider authorization for the county judge to execute a commercial lease agreement between Terry Anderson Properties and Hardin County regarding a building to be leased located at four forty-five West Monroe Street, Coontz, Texas, for the purpose of relocating the AgriLife Extension Agent Department and possibly others into this space due to outgrowing their current space. That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Young. Katie, y'all still need more room, is that right?
Absolutely.
I just want to make sure, just a little bit of discussion on this. This is a, I think it's about a thirteen hundred square foot building at four forty-five West Monroe Street. Term of that lease will begin July the first for one year. At the end of that year, we can either renew it or we can do it month-to-month. Mr. Anderson will sign with that if that's what we decide to do. Payments are two thousand dollars a month and we're responsible for the normal things such as utilities, trash removal, mowing the property and things like that. Also, any minor maintenance items will be on the count such as AC filters and things like that. The property owners will still be responsible for major repairs such as the roof, AC and other appliances. He's also willing to entertain selling that property to us if we decide we want to entertain that later on. So we'll make sure y'all are aware of that. So we have the motion and second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I'd also talked about possibly moving the veteran services officer over there, but she is fine where she's at. She doesn't have a family and would like to stay. Commissioner Cooper and I have talked about maybe moving the US Soil and Conservation Person out of his office over there. So we're going to look and see if there's room and if so, that's probably what we'll do. And once we do that, that building will be full. We'll get with IT and make sure when we can get internet and all that set up over there and hopefully within the next two weeks, we can get y'all moving. And I think he should have remodeling finished by the end of this week. Thank y'all very much. Item six is considering approved request by myself to amend the fiscal year twenty-four budget to accommodate the monthly building lease at four forty-five West Monroe Street, Coontz, Texas, for the AgriLife Extension Agent as follows. Six thousand dollars from the contingency general item, zero one zero four one eight hundred, into a new line item, zero one zero six six five four sixty, rent. And that amount of six thousand dollars. That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number fifteen, consider approval of request by Commissioner Cook to purchase a two thousand twenty-four Kubota M six S one 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 SHDC, serial number three six one five, four-wheel-drive tractor equipped with a Terrain King KB twenty-two, twenty-two-foot boom mower, serial number, serial number oh six oh two, for the R and B four department utilizing a cooperative purchasing program for a total purchase price of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred dollars to be financed for a term not exceeding five years. That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number sixteen, consider approval of request by Mr. Dale Wilford, Hawthorne Field FBO, to pay Trident Petroleum Equipment Incorporated invoice number four three nine five in the amount of one thousand, eighty-seven dollars and eight cents for repairs completed on the fuel pumps which was replacing a CPU board. And this will be paid out of the county airport budget expense line item, zero two two six six four three five six, repairs, maintenance and supplies. That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number seventeen, consider acceptance of resignation of Mr. James W. Smith as Emergency Services Commissioner for Emergency Services District Number Three if they could make thirty of twenty twenty-four. And consider appointment of Mrs. Christie Brown to fill the vacancy. That term will end December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Commissioner Young?
Mr. Smith has moved out of the district and he was on the board for a long time. And then the chief spoke with Ms. Brown about volunteering for this position and she said yes.
She blamed me for that. I told her I did not have anything to do with that.
So I moved to appoint Ms. Brown to fill this vacancy.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook, any discussion?
I'm kind of on the fence.
Okay. She's not surprised. All right, well, we certainly appreciate Mr. Smith's service and thank you, Ms. Brown, for stepping into that position. We appreciate you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Sure, go ahead.
Thank you for all your work during the storms and being available.
Subscribe back at you.
It was a true blessing. Thank you.
You bet. That's what we do, right?
That's right.
Item eighteen, consider and possibly approve the appointment of Mrs. Melanie Cotton as Emergency Services Commissioner for Emergency Services District Number Seven to replace Jacqueline Robinson, who was removed by the ESD seven board. And that term will well end on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Mrs. Robinson could not attend the meetings. I think she had some other commitments and so she was not able to attend the meetings. They asked her to resign and she was so busy, she didn't even respond to any of that request. So after she missed a number of meetings, they removed her. And of course, Ms. Cotton has agreed and I'll turn this over to Ms. Young then. Commissioner Young?
Yes, Ms. Robertson had, when she first put in her application for this newly appointed district board, she is also a nurse practitioner. She had just started a new job and she has not been able to attend any of the meetings. So regrettably, we, they did remove her from the board. And Ms. Cotton has also decided to step up and fill this position and we're very grateful for that. And moved to appoint Ms. Cotton to this vacancy.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Cotton. We appreciate you. Number nineteen, consider approval of request by Mrs. Sims, purchasing agent, to present the results of bids received for Beaver Brook Road Crossing Improvement Project and possibly award to successful vendor or take other action as the court needs necessary. Good morning to the Sims.
Good morning.
I know you couldn't wait for this one.
Do you have some time just to read the base bid?
Yes. Actually, if you don't mind, just read the low bid.
Low bid was MK Constructors at four million, eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
And Commissioner Young, if you don't mind, I'll speak and then you can from there. Is that okay?
Yes.
We do not have the money to do this project. The amount of money that FEMA has approved for us is somewhere near one point three million. Is that correct? Aaron Tupper and then Commissioner Young and then I and Clay and some others have all worked very hard to try to get FEMA to come up with the money to complete this project. We've been talking about this for, I guess, at least five years now, maybe longer. And try to make a long story short, FEMA had kind of talked to us, one of the previous PDMGs that we had working with, they talked to us. The original plan was to have an easement so that everybody could go around the bridge there on Beaver Brook Road while that was being replaced. I think the engineer came up with an alternate design where we could put a bridge in and do one lane at a time and put a red light up that would control the traffic. We wouldn't have to build the temporary road. It would be a better product in the end and just would be better for the citizens of the county. And it's cheaper for FEMA. Fast forward to now, we're finally got, uh, bids and it's four point eight million. The original, uh, estimate, the engineer's estimate of cost, I believe, was somewhere around one point five or one point six million. Our part of that would have been, uh, you know, two hundred, three hundred thousand, and FEMA was gonna pay the one point two or one point three million. They will not, because it's an alternate project, they will not come up, they're, they're saying that that amount is capped. They don't care about the economy or anything else, they will not come up with any more money. So they're okay with us going back to the original plan and paying more than four point eight, eight million and getting the temporary road put in, uh, it didn't make a lot of sense to me, that's why we worked so hard trying to get them to come up to this amount. But, uh, about two weeks ago, we got the final word, it came to us through TM that FEMA says that no, they will not pay the four point eight million. They will still give us the one point three if we wanna come up with the rest of the money. Uh, just don't see how we can do that, Commissioner Young and I have talked about it and we hate not to do it. But, uh, the only way to do it now is to go back to the drawing board, replace those culverts, like for like for like, uh, culverts, I think there's eight, is that right? Take those out and replace them, that requires going back and getting those easements or making sure the easements that we got in the past were still good and building a temporary road before doing that work. So we're waiting on a, a new engineer's estimate of cost, and once we have that, we have to send a request to FEMA to, uh, come up with that amount of money, and once they approve it, we'll get the actual engineering done, go back out for bids. And this never-ending project will probably last another two years, if not longer. So, uh, I also wanna add that Mr. Kelly is not too happy with us about this. Uh, I talked to him probably about a month ago, and I told him then that FEMA was saying no, but we were still trying to get, uh, approval, and I didn't know if it would happen, I told him my initial wish was that we had a fifty, fifty shot at it. Uh, he let me just know the other day that he didn't bid on another project because he thought he would have, have this one, and I'm gonna talk to him again after the day. Uh, hopefully, he's not too upset with us, he does a great job when we ask him, uh, when he does work for the county, and I hope that this will not, uh, cause him not to want to bid on our work in the future, so I wanna make sure everybody's aware of that. Anything that you or the commissioner would like to add, please do. If not, I would move to reject all bids. Have motion by Judge McDaniel, say goodbye Commissioner Young to reject all bids due to, uh, not having the funding to, to put in the project. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, I talked so long, I'm gonna make sure we got a, a lot out there. Number twenty, consider approval of request by Mrs. Sims to authorize the county judge to assign amendment one dash three to fee agreement between Hardin County and NPTX Associates for professional services, grant application development and project management relating to FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, fiscal year twenty eighteen, HMGP four three three two dash zero zero five two acquisition. I think, uh, all the construction's been finished, we're just going through the closeout, is that correct? Have motion by Commissioner Young, say goodbye Commissioner Kirkendall. Is this amendment primarily just to, uh, extend the term?
Yes, sir.
And then, uh, you told me this morning, the, uh, county attorney wants just a, a little bit of added language in there?
Yes, sir.
Just to, uh, make sure that, uh, we're protected and the, uh, contract is protected if there's a termination of the agreement. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Judge, could I?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
A question, real quick, it might need to wait till the end of, going back to number nineteen, and I'm, I'm good with my vote on that, about rejecting bids, but I have a quick question.
Sure.
Is the, is, is the, uh, project manager engineer, they still getting paid on that project regardless?
They have been paid for the work they've done so far. I believe the, uh, engineer's estimate of cost that they're gonna provide us, uh, to, to go back to the drawing board, go back to, to the, uh, original design. I don't know that there will be any costs associated with that, but once they go back to engineer that project and go to FEMA to, uh, and go out for bids, then they will, yes, they will go back to being paid for any work that they do regarding that project. But they've been paid to date, is that correct? For all work that they've done. I believe they provide us an engineer's estimate of cost without any extra charge for that, if so, it would not be a lot of money.
If, if we don't do anything and don't get, have we already received funds from FEMA for the one point eight?
No, we have received, uh, whatever we have paid out to the engineer and, uh, we don't have a grant administrator on that, we're administering that one ourselves. So any funds that we've paid out, we've asked FEMA to reimburse us, is that correct?
But if, if we don't, if we don't do anything with FEMA on that, that'd just be out of pocket for us on that, I assume.
If we don't go forward and do any more work on that project, whatever we've been paid to date, I don't know if they would ask for that back from us, I don't know. That's something we'd have to look into. Do you, do you know?
I do know, but that's a good question.
I would think if we had a design and we just stopped and didn't go any further, they might not want it back, but if we don't do the repair, they might want that back, I'm not sure. We can find out if he wants to.
Well, I just, uh, I mean, I know y'all have put forth an effort and everybody else has, is working on it, but I would hate for them to get paid and us, for the citizens, you know, uh, and us not doing anything, so maybe we will do something, so.
Time will tell.
Thank you.
We've been thinking that since, uh, before Commissioner Young became, uh, the commissioner, when Commissioner Pitt was here, we started on this back in twenty eighteen or nineteen. One of the problems is, is that our FEMA personnel, I think we went through nine different PDMDs on the Harvey project, and now we have none at all, to my knowledge. And, uh, you know, you get a new one, they tell you something different, they won't give you anything in writing. And that's one thing FEMA asked us, if you had anything in writing from us saying that we told you to switch to a bridge project, then we'll look at it, but we had nothing, and they didn't give us anything in writing. I don't think we even got, we couldn't get anything from writing, in writing from them last week, when some stuff, Aaron and I asked them about this new, the back. Uh, let's see.
Twenty-one.
Did we vote on twenty?
Yes, sir.
Alright, twenty-one, thank you, Mrs. Consider approval of request by Shirley Cook, tax success collector, to authorize the tax refund which exceed one thousand dollar limit as follows. It's, uh, one refund for Senior Lake Limited in the amount of one thousand one hundred and one dollars and ninety-four cents for the year, uh, tax year twenty twenty-three due to a value change. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, say goodbye Commissioner Cook, any discussion? Anything you wanna say?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty-two, consider approval of request by Commissioner Young to amend the Hardin County subdivision manual previously approved and commissioned short on June eleventh, twenty twenty-four. This is necessary to correct an error discovered with new regulations. Commissioner?
With all the people that we had looking at this, um, we did not catch a, a typo, so until we sent it out to some other engineers for review it, so we just need to go in and, and correct it.
Can you, uh, so it's on this, uh, article three, section A, padding required?
Yes. First, it says four or fewer parts to lay out, and then it says four or more parts, um, and it needs to say four or more parts.
So the first one that's highlighted in yellow just needs to say four or more?
Correct.
The, uh, one highlighted in green is okay?
Correct.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, say goodbye Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? I'll say that y'all must not have had Candace review that.
Or next one.
She says she's got plenty to do. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Twenty-three, consider approval of request by Mrs. Sharon Whitley, Health Director, to authorize the county judge to execute lease agreement between Baptist Hospitals in Southeast Texas and Hardin County for leased office space located at six oh three FM four eighteen West, Suite G two, Silvy, Texas. This additional space is needed for a conference room and will be funded one hundred percent utilizing grant funds. Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, say goodbye Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty-four, consider approval of request by Commissioner Cooper to purchase a two thousand twenty-four Ford F three fifty truck from Silvy Ford in the amount of sixty-six thousand eight hundred five dollars and ninety-five cents, utilizing the goodbyes for our cooperative purchasing program to be paid out of line item zero one seven six two one five seventy, equipment purchase, and then the fiscal year twenty-four budget as follows, moving fifty-two thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars from the materials and supplies line item. Fifty-two, two fifty-five of that will go to the equipment purchase line item, and three hundred dollars will be a new line item, which is zero one seven six two one three ninety dues and subscriptions in the amount of three hundred dollars. Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, say goodbye Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty-five, presentation of salary committee recommendations for fiscal year twenty-five to the court by the committee chair, Commissioner Cooper, and consider possible action by the court on the committee's recommendations. Commissioner Cooper, you wanna start with the implementation of a longevity pay scale?
Uh, we can do it, uh, if the commissioners will look at the information in the packet, there should be two different, uh, printouts. One would be for the, uh, ten dollars per year of service, and one would be for the fifteen dollars per year of service.
So for each year of service, somebody would get ten dollars a month in longevity pay, is that how it works?
And at the consensus of the, uh, committee, uh, someone would be eligible to, uh, receive these benefits upon two years of service to the county. And it was, uh, a lot of discussion for whether or not we was gonna have a, uh, cap. In other words, there was one proposal, uh, saying cap at twenty-five years on, on another, uh, proposal we had, but the consensus of the committee was no cap on this, so regardless of years of service, you would get ten dollars per year for each year of service with no cap. And that would, like I said, that would start, uh, you would be eligible for those benefits after two years of service. And the breakdown is in front of you on. Follow that information, I believe Candace got. The totals for ten dollars a year of service would be two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars. And you can look, uh, for the fifteen years of service would be three hundred and forty-four thousand, two hundred and nine.
I don't interrupt, I don't wanna interrupt, but I wanna point out something. Okay, I'll interrupt you. Um, there's an amount on here for grant-related personnel, and that amount is forty-six thousand, seven thirty-four. Uh, and it's broken down by each department here. If you look down the one that says SB twenty-two, District Attorney, one thousand forty-six dollars, that amount would not be covered by the grant. There's an am, and I'm looking at the fifteen-dollar proposal. There's an amount on here for Sheriff Dispatch Sheriff for fifty-four nineteen, would you be able to, uh, Sheriff, would you be able to recoup that from the entities? If we did longevity pay and, and that, and that amount, uh, fifty-four nineteen was added, would you be able to recoup that from the entities that you built?
I, I think so, I mean, there, I won't say that that's a grant per se for those dispatchers, it's just a cost share, uh, for those particular people, and we pass those on to the entities, um.
So as long as they had notice to put in their budget, you could.
Yeah, yeah, I think if we, you know, I'm, I'm literally this week sending out notifications to them as a, helpful for them as they're preparing their budget to, you know, hey, this is what you can expect moving forward for, for the end of year. I see no reason why we couldn't include that, um, we always include cost of living.
Right.
You know, we always pass that along to them as well, so.
So I was gonna say, is out of the three forty-four two oh nine, almost forty-six of that would be covered by grants, not quite, uh, one thousand forty-six would not.
So basically, the way it looks, uh, correct me, Candace or Judge, if I'm wrong on this, the only grants that we have that would not cover it is the SB twenty-two.
Yes, sir. So if we went with the fifteen, it would cost us around three hundred thousand for fiscal year twenty-five, based on what people make today, there's no, there's no COLA in this amount, so if there's a COLA, then, uh, I guess it's. No, this would not be based on COLA, so never scratch that. Three hundred thousand is what it would cost us for fifteen dollars a month, and, uh, roughly a hundred and, what, eighty thousand?
But the, uh, SB twenty-two.
SB twenty-two would still be paid longevity, it just wouldn't be covered by the grant, correct? No, 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 they would not, the SB twenty-two would not cover the longevity pay, and right now, there are two people in the VA's office, I believe, uh.
It has to pay them out of.
We would, the county would pay them, they'd be eligible. They get it, yes, yeah.
Well, they wouldn't get it till two more years, aren't they, no?
No, this is people that were moved over to the SB twenty-two grant that have been here, they've done what they can. Is that right, Mrs. Walker?
Yeah.
And are we gonna pay this, uh, monthly, or are we gonna put it into their hourly, or are we gonna pay it once a year? So it will be, uh, added to their, uh, when they do a payroll change form, when the auditor and the, uh, HR does a payroll change form for October first, the longevity gets added in, and so, uh, like the commissioner said, after they've been here two years, they're eligible, but it wouldn't start until October first of the following year. So if somebody gets hired October the third, they kinda get screwed for a year, I mean, they're not gonna get it till the next year. Hey, I, I was trying to use a better word, but I didn't. The sheriff has some people right now that get paid longevity pay through the step pay program that got hired in October, November, and they're part of that also, so everybody would be treated the same.
We kinda mirrored the, uh, recommendation off of what the sheriff's office currently has over there, because they have their own, uh, at this point. Uh, and we kinda tried to mirror that, uh, with this.
And the time period is the same, because that's the way it's always been, if you were hired just after October the first, it still didn't.
You wait till the next week, yeah. It would be very difficult if we, like, if somebody got hired, say, December first, and they worked two years, and now they come to their twenty-four-month anniversary to start paying on that January first or whatever we were going to do, we could do it a bu, a budget limit every commissioner's court to get that done, and it would be a nightmare on, on the finance people, the auditor, HR and the treasurer to keep up with that. What was the reason that it started at two years? Well, uh, my thinking is longevity is, uh, after somebody's been here for a little bit of time. Also looked at some other, uh, counties and, and, uh, looked on the comptrollers website, looks like everybody starts at twenty-four or thirty-six months for longevity pay. So, uh, I do know that there were, uh, some people that wanted to start it after their first year, I just didn't, I just didn't think that.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't wanna start after their first year.
How, how would it be paid out? Is it weekly, I mean, monthly?
Every paycheck they would get, longevity pay on their pay, now, that is one thing.
Starts at two years, ours doesn't start till two years.
Right. Uh, I think there was a question Debbie had, would it be just once a month or every paycheck? I would, I would say, uh, the sheriff's office, it's every paycheck, right? Would it be step pay?
My, this is just my thought, um, the way that we do the sheriff's department is we divide it up through the year. We divide it by twenty-six pay periods, so I would think we would divide the longevity by twenty-six pay periods and sort of, I don't know if we would add it into their hourly rate, but something along those lines.
Well, I think however we're doing it currently for step pay, we just do it the same way for longevity, that way it's easier on all of y'all and, and, uh, everybody's treated the same.
I would like to see it as a separate line item in the budget.
I would too, and I'd like to see it on the pay stub that way, so we don't get back into issue with, with somebody's making twenty-eight whatever an hour, somebody else.
I actually brought that up to Debbie and it was gonna be a.
Well, I can do a separate pay type.
Okay.
I mean, I could use it, and it, and it would show up in longevity pay.
And you could do it for the deputies and jailers too?
On the, on one.
On the step pay that they're giving?
I don't wanna do all the.
It'd be, it'd be hard on ours.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was told, that it would be difficult to go back and do it there, so.
Our pay rate actually changes by step, whereas longevity is a set amount.
Well, honestly, I would like to see it on the check stub as a.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think, I think you could on that side, on ours, I think it'd be asking a whole bunch
Okay.
for them to change the way they're doing ours.
Honestly, I don't wanna make it any harder than we have.
The initial.
You agree with that, don't you?
Yes, sir.
I think, uh, on this portion of it, as far as a, uh, personal, uh, vote, I would want to look at the, and this is gonna be something we're dealing with a little later. I would wanna look at the numbers that it's gonna cost us to have a, uh, cost of living raise before I make a decision personally on a vote, whether I wanna go with a ten or fifteen. Uh, I don't know how the other members of, I mean, we.
Well, we can always come back and vote on this after we have our.
On this portion of it here.
Yep. We can just, uh, we can have our discussion now, we have our discussion on the budget workshop, and we'll come back to this item and vote, if y'all would like to do it that way.
Well, let me ask you this, uh, in your opinion, you're the budget officer, uh.
I'm trying to give that to anyone, just like.
Well, you're the budget officer, so you know what the numbers are?
Yes, sir.
Could we afford a fifteen and a cost of living?
I think we could do a, uh, I think we could do it at fifteen on the longevity and a three percent cost of living.
And, and be able to afford it.
I would like to see us put that in the proposed budget, and if we don't, uh, have enough income through the, uh, adblocking taxes, I think that we can make some cuts in some other places to make sure this is covered.
Alright.
And we can sustain it into the future, I, I do believe.
I've still got, uh, a, a couple more things I need to, uh, present to the court, and then we'll come back to this, if that's alright.
Sure. And I would also say, if anybody's worried about that, I'm not saying this is what we have to do, we can. And I would also say, if anybody's worried about that, I'm not saying this is what we have to do, we can start off low and do something, probably do better next year.
The other proposals that was brought before the, uh, salary committee was, uh, one was from Commissioner Young, uh, and y'all can look on your deal there. She wants to reclassify three light equipment operators and classify them to heavy equipment operators. And according to, uh, Candace, the total cost on that would be thirteen thousand, sixty-eight dollars. The, uh, consensus of the, uh, committee was to recommend that the court, uh, approve that. Uh, does anybody have any questions on that one?
No, but I'd love to get one.
You good, Ernie?
Yes, sir.
Uh, next would be, uh, from the sheriff's office. And there is a proposal that, that I do not see on here, I might be wrong, but I do not see on here. Uh, the sheriff wanted to reclassify only with no cost, no pay increase, no nothing. Uh, and, and his budget in the, uh, corrections side, he has currently a sergeant and four ship leaders. He wants to reclassify the sergeant to a lieutenant and that, like I said, there's no cost increase, that leave it at the same pay. And move the, uh, ship leaders, uh, reclassify them to sergeants. And the consensus of the committee was to allow the sheriffs to do that, does anybody have any question on that one? There is no cost increase whatsoever, just reclassification.
Just the title change.
Title change.
Does that create issues in the future?
Uh, the sheriff, it, it, it does it because of the way it's structured over there, he has a captain and, and, uh, the next closest thing is a sergeant. He just asked him to, uh, reclassify that to a lieutenant and if something ever happened where he had to replace it, a lieutenant would start out at whatever the base pay for that, that line item is, so. All right. If you'll look, uh, for the sheriff in jail right there, he has two positions, what are they classified at, sheriff, I'm sorry, I don't have that.
They're, they're correctional officers, or they're jailer.
They're a regular jailer and there are times to where the ship leaders who now will be sergeants if the court approves that. Might take off and these two people would fill in for them. So he wants to classify them at, sheriff, jump in anytime if I'm, if I'm not saying this right. He wants to reclassify those two positions to sergeants and there will be an increase in pay on that and it will only total fifteen hundred dollars, fifteen oh six to be exact.
For a year?
Yes.
And that includes, uh, fringes?
That, that does include fringes. And this would take place, uh. October first?
There's addition of job duties is the primary reason for that, to be, to be totally honest. So, so I have two, two jailers that are working, uh, they don't work shifts, they work straight days. One, uh, handles nothing but maintenance inside the jail and that is a full-time, more than full-time, every single day, he works with Brian, uh, off and on, um. There's a lot of stuff that's going into that, I mean, every year we go, the jail's older and older, so there's something going on every day. Uh, we're giving him a bunch more duties over there to help facilitate our annual inspections with the jail commission. So he's bouncing ideas off of them, hey, what about this, hey, if we fix this, hey, what's the standard for this flow of water coming out of this lavatory in this cell, you know? What's the square footage? So there's a lot that's coming into that side of it and then, uh, it's no secret, the prosecutors' offices, the county attorney, district attorney, uh, they're busy. And they are rocking and rolling, pushing cases through and the district county judge obviously is pushing. We're spending a lot of time every day sitting in court, playing extra bait with inmates, you know, there's, it's not unheard of for us to bring over twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen inmates in a district court at one time. And so we're, we're adding more and more and more on those day jailers. Again, they're just, they're busy, there's no other safe, they're, they're just busy, there's a lot of people, um, so when they're in court, I lose that jailer off of the floor. And, and the jail commission says you can't do that, if, if they're one of your rated jailers for the forty-eight to one ratio and they leave that jail to come over here and sit in the courtroom. While defendants are going through, you can't count them on your roster anymore in the jail. And so having, having the ability to add those two grant positions that we added helped us quite a bit with that. But we just need another supervisor, we've got more bodies and so, uh, it'll save us a little on step up pay. When the supervisor's not there, that these two jailers that were raised to sergeant could step in as the on-duty supervisor as well. So, six hundred dollars that we're paying, uh, for that bump up, six hundred dollars a year, fringes, it goes from twelve hundred to fifteen, what was it, so? You know, fif- fifteen, so I think it's a small price to get what we're getting out of it.
I would say that the, uh, the, uh, salary committee was unanimous, uh, in, uh, recommend, suggesting recommendation to the court to approve this. Uh, anybody have any question for the sheriff right quick? Uh, the other thing that he has on there, uh, Sheriff, correct me if I'm wrong, the sheriff had a, uh, idea of, uh, bringing his dispatchers up with a certificate pay. Because the deputies and the jailers both get certificate pay. However, the sheriff was not aware of the fact that there was gonna be a proposal for longevity pay and he says that if the court agrees to pay longevity pay, he may withdraw his proposal for, uh, certificate pay for his dispatchers. So that nine thousand dollars would not be included in that price, so.
Sheriff, you go with that, it looks like we're gonna do longevity pay one way or the other.
Yes, yes, we are, and that, and that's actually gonna be better for the, for the, uh, employees too. We, we looked at that and, and it's actually gonna be better, better for them, so.
So the recommendation to the court from the salary committee, uh, would be, uh, after advice from the budget officer to go with a fifteen dollar per year longevity pay. Uh, the reclassification of road and bridge, three, three light equipment operators to heavy equipment operators, that's thirteen thousand, sixty-eight dollars. The fifteen hundred dollars and si- fifteen hundred and six dollars for the two, uh, new sergeants and corrections and, uh, that would be it on that portion of it.
What is the, uh? The seventy-four twenty that's on here for four dispatchers, is that?
That's the match, the sheriff.
Okay, that doesn't, that doesn't get included with here, you can't, in here either, is that right?
Sheriff, if you want to look at this? This seven thousand, the sheriff, is that?
Was that certificate pay also?
Yes.
Okay, so both of those come off?
Isn't that?
Yes, there are.
Jailers, yeah.
There's, uh, four that are classified as the cost shares.
He's got his five that are paid out of general fund and then the four that are paid out of that other.
That's correct.
Fund, okay, thank you, sorry about that. So that, do you want to vote now or do you want to wait till after the budget workshop?
So both of those items are, they're basically as one, the five dispatchers and then the four dispatchers.
Yes, sir, that's all certificate pay.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
Uh, I would suggest, uh, we come back and vote on, uh, line item number twenty-five.
Do you need to leave? Are you sure, 'cause we could stop and, we could just do a budget workshop and I'm not sure how long it'll take, I don't think it'll take very long, if you want a picture now, we could do that.
If it's not a total rush.
No, let's do it.
And then I asked also the, uh, our directors to join us.
We're gonna come stand right up here and you just have, uh, Laura or Sharon can come take a picture. Yes, ma'am. Say, Stu, we can break the camera, she's not gonna share it anymore.
No, but if I was coming to find you, I'm so sorry. The hell not wants you to be with me. Thank you so much, just thank you, thank you, thank you.
I'll be like a lady. Thank you, Bill. Good to see you. Behind.
So who's gonna make this audit out of the hung? And could I also say that, uh, Sharon had a red and there have been billboards, if you've seen them, would you like to say something about that?
It was in.
No.
Four, four, not more.
And so no one else had that, only part of the county.
It was special.
You are special, I wanna be here and get longevity paid.
See, if we, if we follow and take advantage of your programs, that'll help us live longer and we'll make more money.
May I, this here judge is out of, this is.
Yes, ma'am.
Call me if I can. Thank you so much, thank you. Thanks so much.
Yes, ma'am, be careful. All right, we'll move on to item number twenty-six, budget workshop. This is a workshop with elected officials and appointed officials to discuss fiscal year two thousand twenty-five proposed budget expenditures, including salaries, fringe benefits, retirement rate, longevity pay and operation expenses. The following have made specific requests, which will be discussed during this workshop. And we have, uh, two more that came in after the agenda was ready, but I believe we can cover them because it's, we're discussing all of these expenses. And, uh, so one of them is the district attorney and she's here and I think she needs to get back upstairs, so if y'all don't mind, let's, uh, look at her proposal first. It should be picture clipped here in the back. And it should be the third budget that's in that group there. Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, so Mrs. Walton submitted this to me, uh, Friday afternoon and I didn't look at it thoroughly until yesterday morning. And realized there's a, uh, request for increase and, uh, I believe we talked a couple of times yesterday, I think most of it has to do with the, uh, new people that are being added under SB twenty-two. That you need to, uh, get them some training in their state bar dues and a couple of other things, do you want to talk about that?
Uh, yes, sir, so we had a couple of, uh, trap expenses, uh, to get them their, um, hours, whether it's law enforcement or, uh, the attorneys. I tried to budget about twelve hundred dollars, uh, per year, per employee for them to go and get their training. I will tell you, that's really not enough, it does not cover everything that they need and they do have to pay some of it out of their pocket anyway, uh, in, uh, in addition to the twelve hundred. But twelve hundred, I think, is a reasonable amount, uh, for them to get their training hours and so we, uh, I believe I'm asking for eighty-four hundred and it was six thousand. Uh, so that added two new people, uh, to bring us up to eighty-four hundred, at twelve hundred dollars a person. And then bar dues, we've got three lawyers we're paying bar dues for, I just calculated what we paid out this past year for them. And then, um, T D C A A, which is our Texas District and County Attorneys Association dues, we've added some individuals to that as well, uh, covers those dues. And I, I would like to provide those for them if I can, since it's directly related, uh, to the work that they do for me here in the office. Uh, we did add a copy machine to the office because we do have so much work going on now. But we're gonna cover that in the pre-trial diversion program funds, we're gonna send a copy machine to the third floor where that, uh, uh, new drug division is being operated. So that should be self-checking itself with the pre-trial diversion funds, the money coming in has to come out.
Yeah, we don't have that.
Oh, they don't have that one, okay, I'm sorry. Um, so, uh, other than that, we did have some additional expenses that came up on our law books, um, with some new manuals that are coming out and have come out, we've purchased those. Everything that I've requested is, um, literally to the penny what we have been spending. And we had to shift some monies around this year in order to make all of this work out. And so we're just asking, uh, to cover those expenses, uh, for the operation of the office, it's just our basic means. So, uh, we're also gonna be cutting, uh, off the cellphone usage, which I think should save us about thirty-eight hundred dollars. The county judge told me that there's a new program that we can use or a service that we can use through Google that is free. So we're gonna, uh, shut down all of the cellphones and give that thirty-eight hundred dollars back to the budget, um, or back.
You said you might need to keep one, is that still?
We can keep one because it is under contract and Misty got that information for us. However, that can be paid out of the Voca grant for my victim assistant coordinator.
Oh, okay.
And that's already been approved through the, that, that, uh, grant money. So the county will not have to pick that up either, she'll pay for that, uh, and we can use that.
So the thirty-eight sixty-five, all of that will come out?
That'll come out, yes, sir. And I, I think you still have that on there, but we will not need that as of this morning.
So I have a question, 'cause I'm, no, I'm gonna be asked in the hallway.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we're, we're looking at increasing these, part of the reason is the SB twenty-two. And so there's no money that was in the SB twenty-two that could be utilized for that?
It could not be, which surprises me, uh, we had, it could be used for, uh, personnel expenses only, couldn't buy new equipment and furniture, nothing to supply them with anything they need to actually do the job.
Or not send them the training?
Not send them the training and it can only be used for basically salaries and the benefits of them all.
And Matt reached out to the comptroller's office and got that in writing that they would not cover, they won't cover the longevity pay or this other, these other expenses that the DA is asking around. Thank you, 'cause I know someone probably won't ask me.
What number did it come up with?
Two thousand, two hundred and thirty is the total, uh, increase, does that sound right to you, Mrs. Walton?
Well, so I didn't redo the numbers once we took the thirty-eight sixty-five for wireless.
It was, uh, six thousand ninety-five, uh, for fiscal year twenty-five, that was the increase over twenty-four. And then reducing to thirty-eight sixty-five, I came to twenty-two thirty.
And the dues and the, the training, that's all mandated.
Uh, for them to keep their licenses and, and, yes, sir.
You said that one of the cellphones had to stay on, was that included in the thirty-eight sixty-five?
Um, it was included in the thirty-eight sixty-five, but again, the grant, the Voca grant will pay for that, so the county will not have to pick that up. And we already have that approved in writing from the grant.
I'm good with it. Any other discussion? Anything else you want to say?
No, but thank y'all, I offered to give back the water, whatever I needed to give up, so we appreciate you.
We know that y'all are, uh, doing a lot of work up there and we appreciate it very much.
Yes, sir, thank you all.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, can I, next, please?
Ma'am?
You can stay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Not a good time, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, uh, the sheriff's office, the sheriff's gonna come up and, uh, discuss a, uh, presentation that he'd like to make regarding, uh, something to consider for fiscal year twenty-five. We'll just hand them all to Robin and then pass them down. Might be hard to reach, me, in the middle.
I'm not asking for any increases in the expense side of the budget, uh, we've been able to keep that and I think forecast and do a pretty good job, um, on the, uh, on the expense side and on the, uh, payroll side, labor maintenance. Other than what may, what may come through, uh, a cost of living or the adding of that twelve hundred dollars over in the jail side. No, no increases there, just whatever their normal step stuff is. The, the main, the main thing that I wanted to touch base, we've kicked this around and kicked last three, four years. The ability to bring somebody in adderly, uh, just, we're out here recruiting, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to fill holes. We've got, uh, got four openings in the jail right now, have three openings on the law enforcement side. That's my biggest vacancy probably in the last four years, uh, to have it one time. Um, you all know, people come and go for various reasons and we're all fighting for the same applicants, especially on the law enforcement side, it's very, very hard. Uh, it's very competitive in southeast Texas, those inside the county, we all fight for the same applicant pool. And sometimes having the ability to dangle one extra carrot means a difference in you getting that applicant coming to work for you as opposed to somebody else. And we have retirees leaving some of the other agencies of state or some of the bigger agencies and they're wanting to come back home, but they're not ready to quit work. Having something to go and attract them is a big deal, um, and you get what you pay for, obviously, you're, you're gonna get experience, you're gonna get training. You're gonna get somebody that brings ethics and, you know, work ethic and then whatever to the, uh, to the table. All the other agencies in the county, uh, that I'm aware of, pay, I know the big two, Silsby and Lomerton, uh, pay, uh, offer a lateral entry. And what that meaning is, they're able to bring somebody in above what the base level is, as an incentive to get them to come to that agency. Usually it works around level three or a level four is pretty much where the industry's. Usually it works around level three or level four is pretty much where the industry standard, where people cap that of, hey, um, I'll come up with a way to judge what you bring to the table, and I'll, I'll amend what I offer accordingly, on case-by-case basis, and offer that to you in a compensation package, hopefully to woo you over and not lose you to Silsby or Lomerton or one of the other agencies. So no slam on them. We're all trying to do the same thing. We're just trying to get people out and do a good job. But I've been, uh, been kind of on losing in. I haven't had anything else to offer. So if you look at the scale, those are, those are FY twenty-four numbers, uh, as we are right now for base. And for, for the jail side or for the law enforcement side. Asking to, to be able to bring in an employee, potential employee, make an offer up to a level four, dollar amount difference, you're talking, uh, about thirty, I'm sorry, about forty-eight hundred dollars, a little over thirty-five dollars on the LE side, about six thousand dollars on the jail side. We, quite honestly, we don't get a bunch of jailers coming to us with other county jail experience. Uh, that's where we traditionally get new, new employees. Occasionally you'll have somebody that'll come from the state system, T D C J, uh, but we don't really get a lot that come to us. Unlike the peace officer side, we do have an opportunity from time to time to bring somebody in that has experience from another agency, or maybe they're a retiree, or their spouse has relocated and they're looking for another job. So having, uh, having the approval to be able to set that up to a level four, to increase that money a little bit, might help us make the difference in landing that applicant as opposed to losing them to somebody else in the, in the county. Y'all heard me say this before, I already am up against the eight ball because of our pay scale. It is, it is low. It is below the, the cities of Silsby and Lomerton and Sour Lake, uh, and Coontz are vastly catching. They've just got, last year and this year, there's a raise there for both Coontz and Sour Lake, and they've really got their numbers up to where they're not, uh, but about two to three thousand dollars off of ours right now. Lomerton and Silsby are, are ahead of us and really leave us in the dust. We get to start at some new tenants and, and, uh, and supervisors. The five-year officer at Lomerton and Silsby, uh, they smoke us. Hey, I was, I was being honest with you. That's for another argument. My, my, my request is having the ability to adjust that up to a level four. And that gives you an idea on what we're talking about. If you, if you adjusted somebody up on the LE side, you're talking an additional forty-eight hundred and ninety, forty-eight hundred and ninety-three dollars a year.
Would this be money already in your budget?
It could be. You'd like to be able to think that you could use unused salary, okay, uncommitted. You had vacancies, so that money's accumulated. Uh, quite honestly, I'm gonna have a big surplus in my budget at the end of this year right now, because of all the vacancies that I've got. There's gonna be a bunch coming back into, to fund balance at the end of the year.
So another question I've had.
If I, if I, put it this way, not to cut you off, I'm sorry. If I don't have any vacancies, I'm not gonna have a need to hire anybody, okay? If I've got vacancies, then I've got money that's been sitting over here unspent while those vacancies were there, and being able to use that unspent money to cover the difference, uh, I could see where it would be a wash, uh, that there would be plenty in there to cover that. I don't really see a need, other than if we had somebody leave and we had to pay out quite a bit for them leaving, then we would probably have to wait a little bit until we hired that, you know, that new person in.
So here's my next question. What stops every other department making the same request that you're making based on the same need? And for instance, I'm hiring a motor grader operator out of Tyler County with seven years' experience. When he gets here, he starts all over. He has to wait a year to take his vacation. We're there, he's got more than two weeks.
Right.
What makes your need any different than my need, the clerk's needs, or any other department's needs? Because I think we've worked hard to be equitable with everybody and do the same. This will create some consternation between other departments.
I think that's, I think that's a great point, Chris. My opinion on that point is, he already has, uh, longevity pay. The other departments never got it, all right? Uh, he has a specialized pay. We went through this with emergency call-out. He has specialized pay because of the nature of the beast over there, that four-on-four off-the-way. I think because of law enforcement and first responders, he should qualify over other departments, and that's just my personal opinion. I don't, I don't see us giving this, and, and I'm in the same vote. I don't see us giving this to every department, but because it's unique, and he is, he has first responders and law enforcement, I think they should qualify over other departments.
Well, I'm asking this question 'cause in particularly, I get asked questions all the time about this in your department, and somebody upstairs who's always looking and then wants to, you know, complain that, whatever. So I'm, I'm just trying to ask it in the open.
Yeah.
So that we can talk it through and walk it through, because we can make these decisions, but, you know, we're gonna take it with and for it. After we do it, which we've always, we always have. That's the nature of being a commissioner. But just to bring it out in, in, in the open and ask these questions, because we're gonna get asked questions. This is kinda like with Rebecca. When I asked her about that question, 'cause someone's gonna stop me in the hallway.
Right.
So.
So I would tell them to come to court and let's talk about it.
So that, that's my deal, is, is if you've got a concern, then, then step up and, and come say, hey, uh, do, give a sales pitch for your people or your employee or you personally. Uh, from my, from my side of it, um, it's about being, trying to be competitive and get, uh, a good employee when they come down the line, being able to reach out and, and get them. You know, I'll take my, I'll take my elected official hat off and put on my taxpayer hat for a minute as a citizen. I've long wondered why there was not a variable rate for other jobs, for other paid scales in the county, and we picked on heavy equipment operator from time to time. My opinion as a taxpayer is, you shouldn't have a one-size-fits-all. You, you should have a sliding scale for a heavy equipment operator. And if he's been here a year or two, or you hire somebody with ten years, that should be different. Again, I'm staying in my lane. This is my request for, for my department. Now, you gotta handle that in the other departments. That's your job. That's what you signed up for, to approve and set the, the policy and the tone, the tenor on where we go in the, in the future. I do think that it is a unique situation, um, but not so un-unique that it shouldn't be at least looked at in other departments. I'd like to take one quick thirty-second comment about SB twenty-two money to, to reply to a comment while ago. Before we go bashing the state legislature, lieutenant governor, and the folks who made that rural law enforcement grant money available through SB twenty-two, let me caution you. They gave a tremendous amount of money to county governments, unheard of, unprecedented, never in the history of our state. Harden County received a half a million dollars for just the law enforcement side in my office last October one and again this October. The spirit of the legislatures, I've talked to them. I've talked to them in person. I was there for some of their hearings. They're gonna look at you and say, if you can't come up with some incidentals along the way, and we're giving you hundreds of thousands of dollars, how ungrateful are you?
Well, yeah, and my apologies if you felt like it was bashing. I asked a question, 'cause I'm gonna get asked that question.
And I think the response is, uh, I'm, and I appreciate that. But the response is Harden County is gladly accepting a lot of money that's being given to us along with the other counties in the state. And I think it's the very least we can do to spend two or three or five or ten thousand dollars to get two hundred or three hundred or four hundred or five hundred. And in our case, when you combine the county attorney, district attorney, and the, and the sheriff's office, we were just under a million dollars in January one that, that we got, if you combine all of that together. Um, I think, I think it's a very small price for us to pay locally in order to get that money. In your personal life, would you take that? You'll take that offer every day long? Somebody's gonna give you a million dollars, but you gotta give them ten thousand back. So I, I would encourage you, um, you're, you're gonna have some incidentals that are gonna come with that, but look what you're getting in return.
I don't think anyone's had a problem with it.
Okay.
I would just say, I have absolutely no problem with the money that went to the law enforcement. Uh, it's the money that I don't, I don't know how it came about. I think it was kind of a thing that happened towards the end of the discussion regarding the rural law enforcement grants that went to the prosecutors. And then it's all the, uh, not knowing what's gonna happen. So find out after the fact. Hey, we hired all these people and we're paying them all this money. Now we need this to do this. And so that's probably more of the issue, at least that I have, is that, uh, it wasn't kind of all upfront, and I don't, don't blame anybody, not you, not the DA, not the county attorney. I think it just caught, all happened so fast. And, uh, the rules weren't written until the money was already ready to go out. I mean, there's just a lot of things to that. I agree with what you're saying to get, uh, it was actually one point oh, one point oh-five million in Harden County. That's a big deal. But all this, uh, you know, other than we had to do training, buy desks, buy phones, computers, and everything else, that's added up to about a bit of money. Not in your department. It's been in the other two.
Yeah, the, the comparison is some of our GLO and grants and infrastructure grants, there's, there's match funds. This was not match funds, y'all.
No, no, no. I agree.
This was one hundred percent.
I would add too, that the big raises that were given in the other two departments has really caused a lot of problems for us.
Yeah.
Uh, so.
Can I ask you, uh, Mark, uh, I understand where you're coming from on, uh, competing and new picks coming in. Who do you currently have on, uh, on county payroll that would qualify?
Nobody. No, nobody that I'm looking at. This is not retroactive.
Okay.
This is, this is moving forward in the future. Giving me the ability to.
Something else I think, uh, that's important for us to realize too, is this, if you brought somebody in that had four to five years' experience and you started paying them with that LE four scale, they, they're not gonna get the longevity pay, or they're not gonna get, uh, five weeks' vacation like somebody that has been at Harden County. This is just for you to bring them in at a salary. They start off at zero as far as vacation time and everything.
Yeah, and I don't know how personnel policy's gonna handle the vacation allotment.
That was in the years of service policy.
Okay.
Yeah.
So how do you anticipate that? Like, so let's say you give back three hundred thousand, right? Do we, does an auditor verify that? So when your budget amendment comes up, say, six months into the new budget, you've got a qualified applicant, you're gonna start him out more than what you have budgeted for. Do we go back and the auditor verifies, okay, we gave back three hundred thousand last year that was unspent, returned to the contingency. So we're taking the, what is it, four thousand dollars a year out of, I, I guess we're gonna take it out of contingency if we did a budget amendment, correct?
You will have to, and this is gonna be very hard to budget for.
Yeah, I wouldn't think we'd go back out to see how much. I mean, we could. We could go back and look and see how much over the past five years is coming from it.
But he will have to come to court when we realize that he did not have the money in his budget to pay. So we, he will be doing budget amendments.
So, so a workaround that is to come up with a line item and fund that line item, contingencies for salary. Okay, and go ahead and put money in there in the, in the very, and then anything that's not usual rolls off in, in fund balance at the end of the year. That's one way around that. It's a bookkeeping issue. It's already there. It's, but it's voted in the budget, and there's X number of dollars allotted. And you go, hey, if I average three or four people that I brought in, and they had an average of an LE two or an LE three, and it would be, you know, twenty thousand dollars, then we, then we fund this line item with twenty thousand at the beginning of the budget, and it just sits there. And if nobody, if, if nobody falls into that category, it rolls off at the end of the year. And if somebody falls in, the money's there. You're already up. It's planable, foreseeable. It's on, it's on the front end.
I, I don't think, just like you said, uh, probably countywide, our main department turnover is gonna be in the jail. Probably countywide.
No doubt.
I don't think we're gonna have a problem, uh, uh, implementing this, because not too many people are gonna come in with that much experience, I don't think, on the, on the correction side.
Yeah.
And the law enforcement side, I see where you're coming from, and, and I'm good with this. I don't have any opposition to it. But probably it's gonna be, uh, I would say it's gonna be in your administration, your, your higher-ups. And we already took care of that.
Correct.
You know, so, uh, I, I don't think it's gonna be that much money involved, personally, but anyway.
Well, it's nice to have that option to be able to do that.
Yeah.
To, to help.
Right. Cause we don't have that option.
We don't. You, you've already hemmed at it, and, you know, with that. The salary's not that great compared to other agencies around here. You're like a training ground. They come here and work for three or four years, get a little time under their belt, and they move on to Beaumont.
Lost, lost from two weeks ago to Lomerton again.
So I don't, I don't think it would be a big problem, uh, either with other departments.
Sure.
That question's gonna come up.
It's gonna come up.
It's gonna come up, but I don't think it's a big of a problem, because it should be left up to the elected official or department head.
Sure. So understanding my motive is anticipating, based on my years of experience, of what happens after we do this. So I'm trying to do it in an open meeting, so people don't say we did not have the discussion. That's my motive. On the correction side, if you have someone from T D C, they're not T Club certified as a jail.
That's correct.
So if they come over, are we giving a sergeant with T D C who's been there five years, are we giving him four years' service?
I would say no. Uh, that came up in some of our earlier discussion. Yes, it is correctional in nature, but it's not T Club, and it's not jail standards, and there is a big difference. And, and so I would say no.
So you would base, base these, uh, years of service on T Club certification?
Uh, well, on the jails a little bit, yes, in theory. Yes, county jail experience. But they can work up to a year before they ever get their license.
Sure.
You know, on the county jail side. But I would say, yeah, relevant county jail experience.
Okay.
Not T D C or private Dyna Core or G O or some of those.
Just so that rest of members of the court know, the sheriff has probably brought this up to me at least three times before now. I didn't feel like we were in a position to be able to do it. He and I had some discussions, and he agreed to wait until a better time. And I, I just, I think we're there now. I think we're in decent shape now. As the sheriff said, or there are most, in most cases, it will not require a budget amendment, but in some cases it will. I would not be, uh, I would not wanna add a line item for, in the budget for this. If somebody leaves and they have three years of experience, and you hire somebody in with two, the money's there. Three, three, two, or one, the money's there. If, uh, somebody leaves and you got a vacancy for two months, and then you hire somebody for four years of service, most likely the money's there to cover that too. I just think that we, uh, address these on a case-by-case basis as it comes along, if we approve going to this. And I am, I am in favor of it.
Like right now, if, if I had an applicant that came in tomorrow, and, and I looked at him, and I go, man, he's, he's squared away, uh, I, I think we can bump that up a level or two. There's enough money right now unused, that I wouldn't have to do anything. Hiring and putting work.
And just so you know, I, I, I don't not agree.
I, I understand.
I'm just anticipating and just trying to have open dialogue and open court.
Yeah, yeah. Majority of the time, this is gonna be using money that's sitting there that was not being spent because there's a vacancy. You know, on fact, I would think that probably ninety-nine percent of the time, it's because I've got those holes, and the money's been sitting there accumulating. We're not even gonna need to adjust that line item. There's gonna be plenty of money left in there at the end of the year to cover what the salary costs for.
Sure.
Would this be a problem with, um, the deputies that are already working here if they are getting paid less than somebody new coming in?
You know.
Well, if we make this effective October first, anyone who fits this, you could bump them up, right?
But that's not my intention. No. Full disclosure. It's, it's moving forward for new hires. It's not to affect anybody who's currently here already.
Do you have anybody that's currently here that came in as an LE one that could've?
Oh, I do.
Fit into this?
I do. Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm.
So then that's a good question.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it. I think that law enforcement is a very particular situation. It's, um, you go out, you get shot at, you get in fistfights with people. It's different than working in an office, dealing with the public. For being a heavy equipment operator, which we do have some, you know, we should have some leniency on that. That's a different situation. But, um, any other office doesn't have to deal with what law enforcement has to deal with. And so I'm in, in favor of this. It's also not gonna cause any problems with any of your other, um, employees. But if you're just going on experience, years of experience, then I don't think it would be an issue.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're gonna have to look at, at years of experience and certificate level, okay? That's a good mirror of what's their continuing education credits, what's their level, and what have they done? If, if, if I worked at the sheriff's office in Beaumont for four years, but I'm still a basic, I've done nothing. I've done nothing else to increase my certificate level, my continuing ed hours, I did just the bare minimum each year. That four years is probably not gonna equal four years on here, you know what I mean? I'm gonna have to have some discretion there to go, hey, that's a little bit different. You, yeah, you had four years, but that four years is not really relevant of what you should have after four years, you know? And, and I, so I mean, I really think it's gonna have to be a case by case basis where I really look at a lot of different factors when determining what it is. And be able to defend that decision, be able to defend it and say, they've got this number of years of service, here's their training hour level, here's what their job assignment was. You know, if I've got a guy who's a warrant transfer, transport deputy, say at Liberty County. And he's done that for three or four years and he's coming here to work the street, but he's never worked the street. So I don't know that I'm gonna jump out there and give him any big incentive because all he's done is initial time transporting prisoners every day, okay? So I think that's an example of where you would look at that and go, that's probably not somebody I'm gonna give an incentive to, you know, to get them. Because he hasn't worked on the street, he hadn't been through a field training program out on the street as a deputy. And, and again, I don't wanna, I don't wanna lock myself in, but I want that ability to look at that and go, yeah, he's got four or five year service. But it's not four or five year service on the street, okay? And a prime example, and we get some of these, Jefferson County has jailers that go through the academy and they get certified. They're in the jail, but for whatever reason, they can't even get out onto the street to become a deputy. So they're a deputy, but they're housed in the jail and they work in the jail. But he has no street experience. He might be there four or five years and the moment I have an opening, he runs up here and wants to apply with me because he can get on the street here and down there, maybe they didn't have an opening. Again, that's an example of he's got three, four, five years as a deputy, but he's been in the jail, he has no experience on the street. There's no incentive for me to woo to that guy, that girl, because they have no street experience, okay? The flip side of that is I retire at Beaumont PD and I bring a wealth of knowledge and training and experience and, and, and education. That's somebody who says, hey, I wanna come to work for you and I, you know, I think I got some good years left and really do you a good job. Yeah, that's somebody I'd like to actively go, well, I can give you a little bit more than a level one if that makes a decision in getting you here. You know, and it's not.
Yeah.
It's not a bunch of money, y'all.
I think a lot of.
No, I agree with it. I, I agree with the whole process, the whole understanding.
Yeah.
Uh, I just hope, again, do you understand why I'm trying to have an open discussion?
I think a lot of this is a, a national issue too. Mark, you say locally, you can't compete with others, but I think people second guessing themselves, what am I, they wanna get along with.
You're exactly, yeah, you're exactly right.
Because of the way things are.
Yeah, I mean, we've seen that here. Our, our applications are, are down, 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 down. I mean, you, you all know.
We used to have a waiting list back in the day.
That's it. Someone died or retired before there was an opening, that's not the case anymore in the jail. I was working on the jail search stuff for the budget and looking at who's there and uh, man, the turnover from this time last year. Twelve months ago when I compiled the list and I went back in, I grabbed my template and I started working on that last couple of days. And I looked at the list of names and I went, yeah, no longer here, not here, not here, not here, not here, not here. And it's just, it's mind blowing, but you hit the nail on the head, the turnover right there is tremendous, so. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. I believe um since there won't be anything that we do in the, in the budget for this, if we have a consensus that this is, we're okay starting this October first. We would need to put it on the agenda sometime between now and the end of September to actually uh implement this, is that right? So, because it won't be anything that needs to be done, uh, added into the budget, it's just giving permission to do this.
Not to be disagreeable?
Yep. What if we did like five thousand in a line item? He's probably gonna have it in there anyway, but if he has the flexibility.
Okay, so let me ask this. If he has to make an amendment, does he have to wait for the effective date of the hire?
Well, I think whenever, I think when he goes to hire, let's say he's hiring that Beaumont officer that's retiring and wants to bring him in as, as an LE four, he looks at his budget, make sure he has it. If he does, he tells the guy, this is where I'm gonna hire you in at, the payroll change form shows that. If it's not in his budget, he has to come to court right then before the guy comes to work and, and get it added to the budget. Do you agree? That's the way that would work? I would not be disagreeable just to put like five thousand in there because it's not a lot of money. It's probably already in his budget. And that way, it would never be a procedural holdup if he needed to hire somebody before we came back to court. How would that work?
Well, usually someone will give a two week notice, right? And so you, if you, someone would give a two week notice at their previous job before they came to work here, so you have that two weeks flexibility that he could get them in and done.
Okay, so what if he already has an opening in September? This is gonna go into effect October first and he waits until then. But uh, but that line item is at whatever fifty-one, he wants to hire him in at fifty-six. Do we have to do an immediate budget amendment?
But technically we have, to be consistent, we have required that. There'd be a budget, but if it is not budgeted.
I would not be opposed to putting like five, I mean, what's the difference? LE one, LE four, you said forty-eight hundred? So I wouldn't be opposed to doing the line item for like five thousand just to make sure it's covered. It's forty-eight hundred also, the fringes?
Yep.
So whatever would cover like one position and a fringe, I would not be opposed to that.
It's either that or request to, to reach in the, to fund balance for the difference. If it's early in the budget year, you know, our COVID will remember December and you get something like that. But anything that's past that five, six, seventh month mark, I'm gonna know if I've got that money there or not, so.
Do you currently have open positions, three open positions for law enforcement?
I have three on the law enforcement side and four on the jail side, yes.
And you would have money in your budget to cover it if we made it effective now?
Oh, definitely, yeah.
So if somebody were to be hired on between July and October, they wouldn't get this benefit if we made it October the first?
That is correct.
Well, one thing about this is you, you're having to hire, you're having to bring in people into overtime, work overtime. To fill in vacancies that you have openings for.
Yeah.
So you're gonna pay it one way or the other.
And what I said was we can't take action on this today because it's under the workshop. But if we wanna put it on before then, just uh, we can. What's happening there?
I would be in favor of starting it.
Sheriff, you wanna submit this for the next uh, the July night regular meeting for next night?
Sure.
All right. Any other discussion on that? All right, if not, we'll move on to the next request. It's from the flood plain administrator for our vehicle. He uh had a vehicle back when uh Commissioner Young was the flood plain administrator, there was a car that we actually just sold last week. I guess that'd be on the next agenda, take that money.
It was on our database, so we don't.
It's none. Well, we sold that car for eleven thousand and what? Got more than we thought we would part, so it worked out good. Um, so that car became a, a pool, became, uh, became a motor pool vehicle car, what, about two years ago?
It was uh, about two years ago, yes, sir.
And so anytime that Alex needed to go anywhere on county business, he would take that car if it was available, and most of the time it was, uh, but not all the time. And then during this recent disaster, he was having to use his vehicle quite a bit and, and uh, so then he submitted a request to me about getting a vehicle for. You know, flood, plain administrator position for that reason, because there's not always a motor pool vehicle available. And uh, there's times where he needs to be able to go straight to uh flood or, or any other type of disaster, uh, you know, and, and have a vehicle. He's been using his personal vehicle for that. You told me yesterday there might be an opportunity to uh get seventy-five percent of this covered through FEMA. How exactly would that, is that guaranteed or is this a possibility or how would that work?
It's just a possibility. I'm gonna get with uh Mr. Hoover, we're gonna dive deep down in that, probably get ahold of FEMA. Make sure, you know, what avenues, what advantages we can show that that would give the county. It falls under uh flood admin and building code inspectors, so it's basically we get equipment. So we'll do that. Plus, I'm not, I'm not afraid to go out in the middle of the night. I can't get a pool car then. Uh, I know I've been out with the commissioners at the middle of the night and uh sometimes I light them on the weekend. You know, if it's flooding and it's two o'clock in the morning, I'm up.
Well, it was an offer he made two or three years ago and it was a good idea at the time, but it just really hadn't worked out like we thought. And I don't want you to have to keep using the personal vehicle. We've just gotta come up with something. So either provide him with a vehicle or, or come up with some other option. What would be the uh pleasure of the court regarding that request?
I support.
We have, uh, we have a quote here for our vehicle, uh, I just had it in my hand, but what did I do with it? It's uh forty-eight thousand. Now, uh, do we have any idea if that price is gonna be good in October? Do you know?
I can find out.
Okay. And that's for a four wheel drive Chevrolet Silverado half ton truck, right?
Yes, sir.
No bells and whistles?
No, sir. It's basically a work truck with a PPV package.
With what?
The pursuit package.
Okay.
So it's basically a steel wheel work truck, no prills, vinyl.
It's a PPV?
Yes, sir. That's the only thing they had as far as anything with a DA and otherwise you have to go with the four cylinder.
Commissioner Kirk, I love this four cylinder truck. You've been in it for a few months.
Who would you have to go to pray for?
I think if we uh put forty eight in the budget, we might could buy one of the public's cheaper, or maybe not.
I don't know.
I would be in favor of it. I know how important this is.
I would as well.
All right, that's what I'll do. Do it till like forty-eight would be enough.
I think so.
Sounds good to you?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have uh one other request before we talk about the cover. We have a request from Judge Thomas to increase three line items in his budget. One of them, uh, let's go for the two that I think will be easy. One of them, he agreed after we talked yesterday, he was asking to increase the uh court reporter supplies from twelve hundred dollars to two thousand. Uh, he and I talked about that and he said he would actually be good leaving that at twelve hundred and he would come back to us later if, if he thought it needed to go up. Based on the past three years and where they're at this year on court reporter supplies, uh, he felt like twelve hundred would be fine. On office supplies, uh, the budget has been twenty-five hundred. If you look at the past three years, he's never gone over that, but this year he's going to. Uh, he said that uh they just have a lot more work going on now that uh the DA has additional staff and they're doing more criminal cases. Uh, there's twenty-five hundred in the budget. As of April the thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, he's already at twenty-four oh six twenty-six. He's asking for a one thousand dollar increase in that line item to thirty-five hundred, and I don't think that's out of, out of line. Um, then he also has a request in for his court coordinator, currently making fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. The request is to increase that position to sixty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars, which is about an eight percent increase. What would be the uh pleasure of the court regarding that request? And just to remind everybody, we didn't uh send any requests to the salary committee this time. We asked them just to focus on the longevity pay. And any requests like this would come straight to the court, and so that's, that's what he did.
I don't have a problem with the uh supply. I'd be against raising the pay.
I'm the same. I don't have a problem with the supplies and stuff, uh, but, so basically she would be making more than what the last um court coordinator left at if she'd been here for thirty?
Well, if you took that and added the raises since then, it's probably gonna be close.
I'd say.
Yeah, I think, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I didn't figure that, so.
Do you know where you came up with that number?
No. I, I'll tell you this, he said that uh he was going to ask for more, but this is what he came up with. And again, it's the reason is because they're so much busier now than they, than they were a few years ago due to the extra load uh workload and criminal cases. I would say that uh the judge is right that she probably does work hard, but we have lots of other people here that work hard and do uh, go over and beyond that. You know, we just, uh, we'd be opening a can of worms if we did this. I'm not saying that she doesn't deserve it, I'm just saying it would be very hard to do this. She's going to, if we, if we include it in the budget, she's going to get a three percent increase in longevity pay. I'm not sure where that puts her right off the bat, but uh it, it's probably just a little under this amount. How long should that be? Four years, five years?
Four?
Three. I think four is correct.
Four. So that would be uh sixty, if we go with fifteen dollars? Sixty, that'd be seven hundred and twenty. Candace was thirty percent on fifty-seven thousand. So be eighteen hundred on sixty, so say fifteen hundred. Sounds like the consensus of the court is to uh increase the office supply line item by one thousand dollars and no other line item, is that correct?
I see.
The court reporter's car?
Leaving it at twelve hundred, just office supplies.
I would go, if they need.
It's a rough, rough question. With longevity and three percent.
I, I would not be opposed to both of the supplies.
Even though he said he was finally leaving it at twelve hundred?
It was bad?
Mm-hmm. He was finally leaving that at twelve hundred. He was just asking to go up to one thousand on office supplies. So he handed me this, we talked about it, and when I showed him the history and where they were as of April, he said, okay, that would be fine if we leave it where it's at. So is that okay with everybody?
All right.
Now the cost of living. At four fifty-six AM, I got an email from Candace from Kansas. She had this prepared and submitted to me. This is very rough. You see her notes here about uh what is and is not included. A two percent raise would roughly be around, uh, I'm just gonna round it up to three hundred thousand dollars. And a three percent raise would be roughly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If we go with the uh three percent raise plus the longevity pay, uh, the fifteen dollars per month, per year of service. It's gonna be roughly seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Plus, we added roughly a hundred thousand dollars at the last meeting, last budget workshop to add the employee for the agglaf office and the employee for the district clerk's office. And then we have these other ads that we made here a little while ago, uh, they're very, very minor. There's light, light equipment operator, the heavy equipment operator in Milton Bridge three, and then the, the uh correction officers. I mean, all together, we're looking at uh probably around fifteen thousand there. I believe with the increased uh property values that we do recover this with no problem, but if for some reason they can't. I know that there's some, uh, a few places in the budget, one of those, and I've already talked to Commissioner Cook about it this morning and, and the auditor. The uh contingency line item, we've been budgeting that at two fifty a year. We, some years we use that full amount plus some and some years we don't use near that amount. I think we could lower that if we needed to, to offset uh, if we need to. There's some other places too where I can make some cuts to make sure that we uh, that we cover this. I think this is more important than some of the other uh items that we have in the budget. Now, if they're not important as well, because they are, I just think uh the, the pay, the longevity pay, this is something we've been wanting to do for at least the last three years. We have a good proposal on the table. Um, and then the uh cost of living raise, everybody knows how much everything has gone up the past few years and it just keeps going up. I mean, I hear from people that work here and that have worked here for a long time that uh aren't able to, to do things they used to be able to do because gas, insurance, groceries and everything is going up so much. Speaking of insurance, ours is gonna go up as well. Uh, I think uh the information I got from this yesterday, we're looking at about a twenty-five thousand dollar increase in general liability. Uh, workers count, auto insurance, that's all gonna go up around twenty-five thousand, plus about a five percent increase in uh health insurance, is that right? So all of that's gotta be factored in and it's not factored in yet. I still feel good that I think we can do the three percent cost of living increase, put it in the proposed budget. And uh if revenue's not there through our ad valour taxes and our other revenue, which comes from fines, fees and other sources like that. I know some, one particular place that I can cut the uh contingency line item and a few others to offset it. If you want some time to think on that, that's certainly understandable, but I, I feel I'm not making that recommendation.
I'm good with making it. I'm like the sheriff. Everything we're doing is to have qualified, good people here operating at a high efficiency level. We've seen transformation over the last decade in that. Uh, I support it a hundred percent. It's money well spent. Uh, people are the most important resource we have.
I agree a hundred percent with, with that. Because our, our employees have, have always, I'm not gonna say always, but a lot of times they're. Because our, our employees have, have always, I'm not gonna say always, but a lot of times they've come up on the short end. And, and without them, this place doesn't operate. Services aren't provided, so we've gotta take care of them. And I would be in, in agreeance with the three percent. I'll be in agreeance with the longevity as long as we do the three percent.
I'm also in agreeance. Um, I think that the committee and the court has done very good in the last few years of trying to get people where they. Need to be and with inflation and everything, um. I'm good with the longevity and the three percent if we can swing that. Um, I would even say if on the longevity. I look at that as a, an award for being a loyal employee, not a, a retainer for, to keep an employee. We've done a lot in the, in the last few years to retain good employment, so if we had to move, um. Twenty four months to me, my opinion, is um. Not, that, that doesn't really show um, a loyal employee at that point. But if we needed to move it to thirty six months or even forty eight months, I would be okay with that, to make up the difference. But I do think that um, the longevity pay has been a long time coming and I would like to keep the, the three percent call in.
Mr. Cooper, anything else you wanna add?
I'm in agreement with the rest of the court on that. I would go back, uh, cause there was some uh, footnotes on the longevity pay that I did not bring up. To the court or to the uh, other elected and uh, elected officials. This report examines temporary and part-time personnel adult population and employees receiving state longevity pay or pay based on step pays scale calculated on years of service. Does anybody have any question on that? We, we currently have temporary and part-time employees that would not be eligible.
Right.
For longevity pay. And then also, I think uh, we have a situation where. We've had uh, employees leave uh, county employment and come back. And we agreed that this uh, longevity pay would uh. Apply to them as well if they did not withdraw their uh, retirement out. Is that right, Candace?
Mm-hmm.
Um, Melinda, just think more on that, but I believe that.
This is basically going off of the TCDR S, years of service in, in the system is what, what they're calculating it off of.
Yes, as long as an employee does not withdraw their money. And it's only for the um.
Harden County.
Yes, the years' work for Harden County. That's correct.
And I believe we also talked about if somebody withdrew their money, but they came back to work here and bought their years of service back, they would be included in those years of service.
Correct, because I can see that on there. There's no, um, there's no difference on that one.
We will now come up with a longevity pay.
Policy.
Policy, yeah. That'd be in the new policy manual when we adopt it, hopefully here in about uh, end of July. But it will be effective October first if we do it that way.
Uh, is there other members of the court?
I have a question. So is the biggest part-time department juvenile?
Yes.
And does she have loyal, part-time people who only want to be part-time? Like, is there a reason why they're working? What does her, what does her juvenile probation? She's got a ten.
Be detention.
Juvenile detention if it, if she's got a multi-year, part-time person that only wants to do part-time.
I would think she would.
I mean, is, is that the biggest department affected?
Our part-time people are included in cost of living rises.
Yeah.
So.
True.
Yeah, one person I thought about is uh, Kristen, our veteran services officer. She only wants to be part-time, and I hate for her to miss out on this, but uh. It's uh, it's just one of those things, we gotta draw the line somewhere, and I didn't find any other agency that pays part-time personnel longevity pay. But if she becomes full-time, we will add her part-time to that because she's been paying, paying in TCDRS.
Can she be full-time at twenty, or however many hours she wants to work?
Mm-hmm, not according to our policy. She can't. And it's a little bit different because a part-time person is, they, I mean, they may contribute to TCDRS that month, but we have some that only work. You know, eight hours of pay period or eight hours a month, so they're not working as much as our full-time employees, so you can kind of take that away.
So how many hours does she have to work to be full-time? Thirty?
Um, it has to be at least um, thirty. It has to average thirty hours or more.
Over a six month period?
Yes, a week over.
Well, then you have to work thirty hours. I know.
There's other benefits that can longer than that.
I'd say it's something we do look at later.
All right, yeah.
Uh, so.
I wanna add too, you brought up adult probation. They are, they are actually, we pay them and then we get reimbursed by the state, is that correct? As far as payroll?
Well, it's just like any other grant.
But all their other benefits come from the state, their health insurance and all that comes. They're, they're technically state employees. They also get that annual uh.
Because of merit rates.
Right.
Because of the merit rates.
Right. So they're, they're taken care of. I wanna be sure that we weren't excluding somebody for some other reason. Thank you for bringing that up.
Yes, and uh, you wanted to go back to the twenty five, but we're.
If we're done with the budget workshop, is there anything else we need to talk about?
Did we go over everything, Candace?
All right. That concludes the budget workshop. We'll go back to item number twenty five and take a vote.
I would move, I would move that uh. We go by the recommendation of the salary committee on what was proposed to the court.
And that would be uh.
The information.
The longevity pay would be at fifteen dollars a month?
At fifteen?
And that would all be effective what date?
October one.
Sounds good. Any second? And motion by Commissioner Cooper, second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Did we cover anything on that?
I think it should be fifteen dollars per year, right?
I don't know. I suppose fifteen dollars a month per year's of service.
Yes.
Fifteen dollars per year.
Paid a month. A month. But it's.
How is it, Sheriff? You brought it?
Yes.
Fifteen dollars for every year of service.
Paid per.
Pay out monthly.
Okay. Well, what he said, is that your motion?
Yes, sir. Y'all want it monthly or bi-weekly, it's twenty six pay period?
Whatever is easy for you and the uh, treasurer. I'm good with.
Yep.
What, what's easiest for y'all?
Probably twenty six pay period.
Or over two paychecks?
Every check?
All right.
Or once a year.
That's your motion now too?
Yes, sir.
You still second that? Any other discussion?
Should we say beginning October first?
He did.
Okay, sorry.
You are listening. For the first time. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank uh, you very much, Commissioner Cooper and the entire salary committee. Y'all have uh, handled some delicate issues over the past few years. And hopefully this year wasn't quite as bad, but thank y'all for all the work that y'all done in the salary committee, all of you. Surely left, but be sure and pass it on to her too, please. Twenty seven, discussion on any other non-agenda item without taking action, including reports from elected officials and department heads or announcements which may be of interest to the public. Would have any announcements or any discussion on the items that any elected official or department head wants to bring up? Item twenty eight.
Uh.
Misty has something, go ahead.
We talked about the command center earlier, that sealed bin sale that closes on July third.
Which is next Wednesday?
Yes, sir.
At two o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. Did you make a motion?
So Jeremy?
Yes.
Sir.
Having motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, second by Commissioner Cooper, all in favor?
Uh.
Where's Jeremy?
That's a record there. No, we, we did two.
I told y'all all do, we just didn't get to our meeting anymore.